I'm going to call the meeting to order. Let me know when we're ready to start. Ready? Okay. Okay, so let's do roll call.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Present.
Councilmember Resendiz.
Present.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Deanda. Here. And Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Resendiz, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Ready pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let me check with the city attorney. Is there any report outs from closed session?
There was nothing to report out from the last closed session.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on with our first agenda item. Five point one, update on Highway 25 project by council of San Benito County Governments, or in other words COG. So we receive a report on 25 from B- from Executive Director Benu Abraham. Is she here?
Hi, good afternoon.
Oh, she's on, okay. There you are, Benu. Thank you.
So I have three things that I want to update you regarding Highway 25 project. The first one is that Caltrans has started the EIR or the environmental studies on Highway 25. So the notice of preparation was completed in end of December. And now the environmental studies, both the CEQA, which is the state requirement, and the NEPA, which is the federal requirement, are being done concurrently. The timeline on that is we are expecting the study to be finished by end of 2026. There will be a comment period and a public outreach for people to be able to review and provide comments. And that will happen in twen- end of 2026, early 2027. So that's on the EIR. And then we had a landowners, landowners or farmers' meeting on January 28th. We had two meetings because there were questions from the landowners along Highway 25 that they wanted to know, how did we come to the conclusion? And how did we make some of the decisions that were made in 20, in the early days of this project? Twenty ten, 2009 to 2016 and 2020. So they just wanted to know the history of the project. And so we needed some time. Caltrans went back to collect all the data and the facts. And they had two landowners meeting, one at 1:00 PM and the other one at 5:00 PM, to talk to the landowners, show them the route that was adopted back in 2016. There is another one that's planned for tomorrow. That's a virtual meeting for people who could not attend the January 28th meeting. And lastly, there's a safety improvement project that's been driven by the Speaker's office. So the Speaker's office met with District Four Caltrans, which is the Santa Clara Portion, and District Five Caltrans, which is the San Benito Portion. So they talked about what are some of the immediate safety improvements that can be done. There was a safety analysis that was done. The result of is going to be coming out in the next month or two. And so they are still exploring what are some of the short term, maybe like barriers or something, striping, rumble strips, strings, stuff like that, that could be pursued in the interim while the EIR is being done. So that's my update. I'll happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Abraham? Any questions for clarification?
I think some of the public might like to know a little bit about the 101 Southbound at 25 improvement, maybe kind of when that might start, maybe the timeframe, when the road might be closed, just so they can figure out when to kind of, I don't know, just plan their commute. Is there any update on that at all?
Yeah, I can try. It's actually a District Four and VTA project because it is in the Santa Clara Portion. But I can definitely give you the information that I have and point you to where you can get more information. So that project, the 101 25 ramp improvements, phase one, that was supposed to start in fall of 2024. The reason it got delayed is because PG and D, the relocation of utilities, took more time than they thought they needed. But it is on track now. So they expect that project to start, the work on it around April, April or May of this year. For more details, that is there on the VTA, the Santa Clara equivalent of SB COG, on their website. And as we get more and more information, we will be pushing it out from our website, too.
Councilmember Morales.
Hi, Benu. Welcome, it's great to see you. Can you share, in terms of the immediate safety measures, is it in response to the community's need for Purcella's death and the three high schoolers? Is that, is that, or is it the everything that's been happening, the totality of everything that's been happening in our community?
I am not, I'm not sure if I got the whole question, where you're asking about the safety improvement project?
Yes.
Okay. This was in response to some of the collisions and fatalities that happened on Highway 25 in the recent past. So both Santa Clara County Portion and our San Benito Portion, we had to come together and discuss how things can be resolved and how we can make this more safe for people who are using it. Because the people are using it and not thinking about whether they are driving on Santa Clara Road or on San Benito Road. So Speaker Rivas's office got involved and they wanted to understand more. So this was driven by a conversation or at a level from the Speaker's office in coordination with Caltrans headquarters. So Caltrans headquarters in Sacramento got involved and they are doing the safety study, or they are, District Four and Five are doing the safety study and reporting to Speaker's office along with Caltrans headquarters. What it means is there might be help from headquarters to do something immediately to resolve this safety concern. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did, Benu.
And, and Ms. Abraham, can you clarify, when you said District Four and Five, which District Four and Five are you, are you speaking of specifically?
So District Five, Caltrans District Five is the representing Caltrans state entity for the counties of San Benito, Santa Cruz, Monterrey, San Luis Obispo, and Santa Barbara. District Four is Santa, Santa Clara and North. So each district has a different area that they are responsible for. Because Highway 25 is, majority of it is in Santa, San Benito, but a portion of it happens to be in Santa Clara, we are, we have to interact with both districts.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you for that report. Are we having public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, so we're going to move then. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Abraham.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So we're going to move to public comment on items not on the agenda. So, City Clerk, do we have any?
Yes, Mayor Stevens, we currently have three speakers. The first is Danny Barrera Jr., to be followed by Margarita Vehar.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask a quick question before the speaker comes up?
Okay.
So I know that we're, this is new to me because we have an item agendized as an informational report for him, City Attorney. So should he wait until then, or should he speak during public comment? I guess it depends on what he's speaking about.
It has nothing to do with the, just the information.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Mayor Stevens.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, I should have clarified that on my note, that it was just information. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. I just wanted to share some updates with you guys about the senior center, about Hovense de Antonio. We are entering our 50-year anniversary and we're excited about that. The seniors are excited about recognizing the tremendous work that our, that our staff and our seniors, our volunteers, our community have kind of put together. We have some new updates coming up. We are going to be offering, well, currently, I just want to share with you guys as a reminder some of the programs and services we currently are offering. We have exercise every Tuesday and Thursday. We have upcoming a Tai Chi class at 1:00 on Wednesday, starting in March. And that has been, people have been asking about that, it's been exciting about that, preparing for that. We have our, we continue with our lunch, our lunch programs for our seniors, as well as our Meals on Wheels program. And so we're just out here today, there's a couple of us that just wanted to share some of the awesome things that are happening. On our Tuesdays and Thursday exercises class, I just want to invite you guys and, and the community to attend one of those exercise classes, specifically the ones on the first Tuesday of the month. Because, man, they have so much fun. We have one of our partners come in and they lead the class and they have this huge beach ball. And so today in my office, I was just hearing all the laughter down the hallway and the seniors are smiling and having a great time. And you should just experience that moment. It's a good 45-minute class. And it's, it's just very uplifting and positive, a positive vibe that's there. And so again, I just encourage you guys to make some time to come down there on the first Tuesday of, of the month. Also, I want to challenge you and some of the members of the public, we are offering a ride-alongs for our Meals on Wheels programs. So if you would like to spend from 9:00 AM to noon in one of our Meals on Wheels trucks and go out on a route and kind of experience that, that is something that we are offering to the community and to this council and to any member who wants to just have, have a moment to see how that process works and just see the good work that's happening door to door. And so then also, another big part of our programs that I just wanted to highlight real quick was our transportation program. We have a contract with, with a local transportation agency. And we offer specialized transportation for seniors to go to doctor's appointments, grocery stores, to the bank. And right now, we're up for renewing our contracts, so we're in the negotiations of that. And so I just wanted to share that information with you guys and with the public and ask you to continue to support our senior center for all the good work we're doing there. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Geron. Thank you for all the great work for our seniors. It's really important.
Our next speaker is Margarita Vehar, to be followed by Luis Espinal, I believe.
Hi, my name is Margarita Vehar. I just recently joined the senior center. And let me tell you, it's the nicest place to go meet seniors. We have a lot of fun there, the lunches are wonderful. And I just wanted you to know how much we enjoy the senior center. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Luis Espinal, to be followed by Mia Casey.
Hi, everyone. Sixteen years in Hollister because before I live in New York, and I only came one time, like four, five weeks ago. And this is new people, congratulation all of you, except you, which I remember. Anyway, the reason why I am speaking in front of you is I have, as I said, sixteen years in Hollister. And the first five, knowing the area and so on. And the last nine, working in the insurance business. And I have my business plan to do, from Hollister to the whole country. Right now, I am agent and agency for 10 states totaling 100 million people that I do advertising, so. A small business administration suggests me to go to the city because it's some programs who help business people where you can get for six months or less, people who will be involved in your business as a trainee. And after that, they could be part of our payroll. I did that nine years ago. And I visit a gentleman, Trustworth is his name, his death now, when he met me and he sent me to someone who is called Enrique Areola, who was a trainee. The trainees people send people to us. I did something wrong, probably, because I pronounced wrong that name. And from nine years up to today, I didn't get one person. And I have so many examples on why I didn't get it. I pronounced a Roman, a wrong name to somebody. And every year, I do a $1 million insurance to that department of the city. That department on, on the, on the city is called CSWD AJCC. Sounds like I'm picking too much. Oh, this is, oh, telling me to say. The idea to conclude is, for nine years, I didn't get one trainee having large insurance, millions of dollars. And every time, same history.
Mr. Espinal, please feel free to reach out to any one of us on the council or city manager, and then you can continue to talk. Because you, you have reached your time limit and we have to move on with the agenda.
I would love to say hi to you direct. And if I get people, it's okay. If I don't get it, it's okay, too. But I have some big ideas to develop from Hollister, California. And here I am.
Please reach out, please reach out. I welcome all your ideas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Mia Casey.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I want to urge this council once again to finalize the fire contract negotiations. Due to your actions revoking the resolution that protected firefighters, we have a number of them considering leaving our department. We need to support our firefighters and this means making it your top priority. And I have to say once again that I feel an ad hoc meeting that is taking place between two different agencies negotiating a contract that's so very important to our community should be open to public access. I question why we don't have this transparency and why it is not. I've also heard very little about what's happening around the biker rally event. Given statements made by this council in the last meeting, it would seem that our situation with the city is, budget is very dire. And I had heard an initial price tag for the city to put on this event was $300,000. I'm now hearing that the price tag has climbed to $400,000 and may even reach a million. I have to ask the question, if you're so concerned about our budget and our firefighters are at risk, why would we prioritize an event over public safety and government operations? Thank you.
Those are all the public speakers we have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the speakers. So let's move on to our consent agenda. Do any members of the council have any brief questions or comments on items on the consent agenda? Councilmember Resendiz, I'm sorry, Morales?
Thank you. Just thank you to Councilmember Resendiz. I would like additional information on the hotline, if it's the Rapid Action Network or, or where the hotline is going. And then just if there is one of the, of the, whatever we're printing, there's a, there's an effort to, to kind of bring everybody together on this issue. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Would you like to have it pulled so we could have a brief discussion?
I, I think that's a good idea.
Sure. And then, I mean, it's, it'll be just good information for the public. Okay, thank you for that, Councilmember Morales. Any other comments or questions from the council on the consent items?
7.12 and 8.1 seems somewhat connected in a way. And I'd like as much information about 7.12 as possible, about the contract being awarded for 8.4.
Would you like to pull that one as well?
I would. And I, I feel like 8.1 might need to come before 7.12. But I, I'm not sure if I'm speaking out of order here, it's just my gut talking.
Let me check with the city manager. Should, can we change the order and?
So this contract would be underneath the, this agreement, this community workforce agreement, is that correct? Okay. So yeah, this community, this 8.1 item is just for discussion and direction. So there's, there shouldn't be an issue taking care of 7.12 ahead of that.
Okay. Does that work? Okay, okay, so we will do that. Any other? None, no others? Okay, thank you for that. So we're going to pull those two items. And any other questions or comments on the rest of the consent items? No, no. Okay, so can I get a motion?
Mayor Stevens, I do have one speaker for the consent calendar items.
I always forget to do that. Thank you for that, City Clerk.
No problem. This is for item 7.6, Miki Solorio Luna.
Ms. Luna, do you want to, do you want to hold your comment up? Because we pulled that item, so we're going to have a brief discussion about that.
You have your discussion first and then I can speak on it?
We're gonna, we're gonna actually pull it from the consent item and, and have it as a regular agenda item. So we're gonna just vote on the consent items first. So if you just, actually, you can just hang on right there if you want so we can vote on the consent item and then we're gonna dive right into that agenda item. Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Luna. Okay, so, any other, any other comments?
No, there are no public comments for consent.
Okay, so can I have a motion on the consent items?
Mayor Stevens, I'll move to adopt the consent as presented by staff other than item 7.6, I think it was, and 7.12. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so those consent items go through. So let's go ahead and open up discussion on 7.6. Resolution authorizing City Councilmember Resendiz to use city council budgeted fiscal year 2425 discretionary funds for financial support of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County and related administrative costs. So can we, should we take the public comment now or have the discussion first?
It's entirely up to you.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from Ms. Luna.
Thank you. Of course, I'm Miki Solorio Luna and I am the president of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County. And next Monday, February 10th, we celebrate 37 years in the community. So we have worked very hard in representation of many people, not only Latinos, but a lot of people, especially students, that now we see in corporate America, now we see as attorneys, as educators and that. And they're all from Hollister. So this is the kind of work we've done, educating the community on immigrant rights, on everything that comes forward. And let me tell you, we did not expect what we received this past month. And in order for us to safeguard the Latino community, the immigrant community, and I think it's been quoted that there's over 33,000 immigrants right now here in San Benito County. So there's a lot of fear with immigration. And so in order for us to work on it and bring people together, we've had calls like, imagine my phone, cellphone was blowing up. But in order for us to calm people a little bit, we went ahead and, and received a toll-free line. It's a rapid response. But because the organization did not have it in the budget that we were going to incur all these costs, we thought this is a priority for our community. And we went ahead and paid for the line, paid for the red cards, the immigration cards. We paid, actually, we brought people together, we invited 40 people and 100 showed up, over 100. And so there is a need, there is a fear. And in order for the Latino community, the Latino Coalition to move forward, we have to do everything in our power to bring people. to bring people together so that everybody knows that, yes, there's fear. There's fear for even us that were born in the United States. I was born on Fallon Road in the ranch. But you know what? There is fear that I will be stopped, that I will be asked. And you know what? I feel that in order for us to try and safeguard our community, our immigrant community, we needed to do this. And I can tell you that we have received a lot of calls on the eight hundred number. We have people assigned from our organization to respond to those numbers, to respond to the people. And let me tell you, we're not getting them just from Hollister and San Benito County. I mean, the number is out. We're getting them from Fresno, Greenfield, you know, Monterey County, Santa Cruz County. But you know what? We have the referral network that whoever comes in and it's not our county, it gets referred out. And that's our cost. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Luna. Okay. Yeah, just be just be kind of waiting. We might have some questions, but let me turn it over to Councilmember Resendis since this was his item. And so there may be some questions. So if you're willing to just stick around for a bit, maybe there might be some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, Miki. Thank you, Dave. Thank you to our chief of police and thank you to the sheriff. I had a conversation with, I think, my coworker, who is part of the Latino Coalition, and invited me to a press conference that Miki and the Latino Coalition was putting together. I'm I'm proud to say that myself, the mayor, Priscilla, were all in attendance. And I think that the message I got across, number one, I feel like we have an obligation to kind of to help decrease anxieties, so to speak, not only here in the city but across the state. And the message that I got from the press conference was very positive, very, very uplifting and very community focused. So I just, again, I really felt like it was very positive, very informational. And just to kind of decrease some of the anxiety, Miki did share that they have an eight hundred number that they had purchased. It's kind of like a peer mentor type of situation where you're going to get somebody to speak to, and they're going to plug you into the resource you need. And they also had an immigration attorney who is from Hollister doing business here that was there presenting the facts. So I felt very confident in what the Latino Coalition did. I'm very grateful to them and to everybody that came to that. Also, we've got superintendents, we had school, everybody was there. It was really nice. And on top of that, a lot of people are putting out red cards or orange cards. I know a lot of the schools are doing it. Superintendent Tennebaum, Dr. Tennebaum gave me some. I gave them to the city staff. We're getting them checked by legal to see if we can put that information out publicly, I believe, and let people know that if you want to know what your constitutional rights are, you can pick up a card here at City Hall. And I'm hoping that after tonight, if my colleagues approve this item, that we can also put out the phone number and let them know if you have any questions, then here's a phone number. So here's the phone number, here's some cards. And again, we're just trying to decrease some of the anxiety that's out there around these issues in these times. Thank you again, and thank you, Mayor Stevens.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? So I'll just make a comment about this. I was I was at the same meeting, and I actually have had a few conversations with Ms. Luna and other members of the Latino Coalition. And the thing that was really important to me, similar to what Councilmember Resendis just said, is that we want to be able to alleviate some fears and anxiety among our community. These are our neighbors. These are some of our children that are attending our high schools and elementary schools and middle schools, our Gavlin College. So we just want to alleviate fear. More importantly, just let people know what they can do if they need more education, more information and some support. And so that was the point of the of the meeting. So that was it was very, very uplifting. So I appreciate this item coming before us, and I'm glad that we are able to get the message out in a small way. But thank many, many thanks to Latino Coalition, especially to Ms. Luna.
I'd just like to say one thing. Living in fear is really no way to live in life at all. And I worked in the schools for a long while. I worked with Roland for a while. And students in particular, if they're fearful about mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, or somebody like that, families getting pulled apart, that's that's not okay. So I think anything that we can do to kind of reduce that fear can keep the student's head focused on what they need to, which is school, getting along with other students, athletics, and any extracurricular activities that are positive, super important. So I am bummed that I missed that meeting, but I sure am glad you guys went.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it was a good meeting. Okay, so any any other comments? Who wants to make a motion? Oh, sure, go ahead, go ahead, Miki.
We did a survey on resolutions adopted by board of supervisors and city council. I would like to request that this city council adopt a resolution regarding immigration. I know that there's several that have been emailed to me, and I have emailed them out. So if you could consider that, I think it would be a big help to our even our elected legislators who are asking for those resolutions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Morales will speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. I actually have that as a request for an agenda item, provided copies of all the neighboring jurisdictions, city council members, city resolutions. We also have copies of what the counties have done and what school boards have also done in terms of these topics. So we have a comprehensive list. Hopefully, tonight, my colleagues will bring that back as an agenda item for for discussion and hopefully to adopt a resolution.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on. Councilmember Resendis?
Thank you. With that being said, I'm prepared to move for the resolution. Okay, so I will move that we adopt resolution authorizing Councilmember Resendis to use the city council budgeted fiscal year twenty four twenty five discretionary funds for financial support of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County and related administrative costs.
Thank you. And can I get a second?
Third.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward with the pulled item seven point two twelve. Seven point point, sorry. Seven point one two, a resolution awarding a contract in the amount of eight billion four hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and eighty two to Marineship Development Interest LLC for the industrial wastewater treatment plant and Bridge Road Stormwater Improvement Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Marco, Marco Martinez. I'm with the Public Works Department. I'm one of the engineers for the department. And the item before you tonight is to adopt the resolution accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Marineship Development LLC. It's basically for the industrial water wastewater treatment plant and Bridge Road Stormwater Improvements Project. And basically, it would authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and any related documents. So a little bit behind history on the project. So on October seventh, twenty nineteen, the city council adopted Resolution twenty nineteen dash two two four, authorizing the preparations of plans and specs for the industrial wastewater treatment plant portion of the project, entailing stormwater improvements. Those plans were completed in August, twenty twenty three. And requests for bids were advertised, but only one bid was received. It was way over budget, so bids were rejected. And on August seventh, twenty twenty three, the city council also adopted Resolution twenty twenty three dash one four five, authorizing the preparations and plans and specs for the Bridge Road Outfall portion of the project. Those plans were completed in November of twenty twenty four. As far as a bit of of the funding portion of the project, it is based on a match grant. And it is, half of the project will be funded by Prop One grants, and the remainder will be covered by Funds six six two. Given that the two projects were related and for bidding and potential cost saving purposes, we decided to combine the two projects and put them out to bid. So this created the IWTP slash Bridge Road Stormwater Improvements Project. And on January eighth, twenty twenty five, two bids were received. The lowest was from Marineship Development LLC in the amount of eight million four hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and eighty two. So the what the industrial wastewater treatment plant improvements will entail is the trash capture structure, inlet strut inlet slash outlet structure, emergency spillway, emergency backup generator, slide slide gate diversion structure and inlet structure at pond three, hardened spillways to ponds three, four, and five. Now, as far as the Bridge Road portion of the project, it'll entail three new trash capture structures, two flow diversion structures, one flow splitter structure, inlet and outlet outlet pipes for the system, installation of all the required manholes, reconstruction of the existing city parking lot, and relocation of city existing waterline and additional solar lighting as that area is pretty dark at night. So these improvements are all required as part of the trash amendment to the city's municipal separate. They call it an MS four permit, which basically regulates stormwater discharge. It's it's a permit regulated by the state. And it applies to any municipalities serving populations less than one hundred thousand. So city staff is requesting city council to accept the bids to go ahead and perform the stormwater improvements.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Resendis?
Thank you. So I don't know if you're going to be able to answer these questions. As the city manager, feel free to jump in if you'd like. But I do think Vice Mayor Pacheco brings up a valid point. This did fall under the PLA agreement we have with the unions, did it not?
That is correct. This project is, if awarded, is within that. The current threshold is $250,000, and this project qualifies for that.
Okay, so I do think that he brought up a very valid point. But my my questions are about numbers. So we got how many bids initially?
So initially, when it was the first project, which was just the the project at the plant, there was one bid came in far too high, and so that was rejected. And that was back in twenty two, August of twenty twenty three.
What was that number?
I would have to pull it off the top of your head.
Okay, that was before you combined them, then?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, so the engineer estimated the cost of this project, did you not? What was the estimated cost of the project?
The estimated cost, I'd have to. You mean the the combined total or?
Sure, yeah, that's what we're voting on tonight.
So.
I have it.
You have it.
So it would be seven million, five, call it seven point five million rounded. And the bid amount came in at eight point four rounded.
Okay, so a million dollars over the estimated cost from our department?
Approximately.
Okay, that's a lot of money. And we're using matching funds from our taxpaying citizens' dollars to cover the cost of that.
So how it works is Prop One, from a handful of years ago, there was Proposition One that created projects through grants. It was through a bond program that deals with water quality. And so the Bridge Road project, which is where that trash capture will be kind of at the beginning of the trail where the the river trail is, that project is funded through the grant. So we did receive the grant. However, it requires a match component. And so to to spend those funds, we have to bring our money to the table. So by combining this program or this project, which we then have to do to have our permit, so it's a requirement of the state for the water quality. Think about it as, you know, with your stormwater system, the storm drains, you could throw a sweater in the storm drain, right? It'll make it there. Right now, that stormwater makes it out to the basins and basically either evaporates. It is absorbed by the ground or in heavy, heavy storm years, it'll spill over into the river and out the river. And so what this does is think of it as a as a capture right before it makes it to those ponds to capture that debris and filter it out. And then staff go in and have to maintain it and pull it all out of there. So the two projects together create the match for themselves. And the work, we have to have that system in place to have our permit.
No, I appreciate that. And I understand, I don't need to know about the project. I I'm well aware of it. I'm fully in support of the project. I just thought that, again, Vice Mayor brought up a very valid point. We are using people's taxpaying dollars, a million dollars over, and we're tied to this contract. So it does fall into the lines of the topic that we're talking about later. I'm sure we're going to get that in your discussion. You'll show us the projects that we've done.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I'm looking forward to that. Again, it's in my district. I'm not happy about the dollar amount. I'd love to hear from the public. We're contractually obligated to follow through with this. So we'll see what happens when we hear from the public. But I'm looking forward to the next item. But I was concerned to see that it came so high over budget. Thank you.
Just for clarification, the the matching funds are from from stormwater impact fees that we've collected.
Thank you, Councilmember Resendis. Councilmember Pacheco?
First of all, you know, our town's getting older, right? And our infrastructure is aging as well. So clearly, I get nervous every time I hear the word combination atmospheric river. I really do get nervous. You know, we have them every few years, it seems like now. We had one a couple of years ago, created some major problems. So in my gut, it's I we need this project to move forward. And secondly, I really feel like it was shrewd. I I think I read it was city staff that came up with the idea to combine the two projects and then use some funds from two different sources to to make that happen. I think that's fantastic. I myself, I I know that people get up really early, they go to work. They don't get to see their kids as much as they'd like. And I know there's only a couple of things in life that are for sure, and that's death and taxes. So our taxpayers are the ones that are paying for some of this. And I really just want to make sure that people know a little bit about kind of how the money's coming in. And and I I just, in my gut, want to feel sure that it's we're getting the best deal, right? Initially, we got one, we got two bids on the on the second go around. Two is better than one. I do know that competition in the marketplace yields a lot of beneficial fruit for consumers. And in this case, it's everybody who uses the town, right? Our stormwater's got to go somewhere. We don't want a bunch of debris in there. But competition, it creates more option, increased quality and lowered prices. And that's kind of comes around to what I'm talking about is like public stewards. We're stewards of the public money. We just want to make sure that when we are doing capital improvement projects, two is better than one. My question is, it may not be for you, maybe it's for city staff. How are we letting the bidding contractors, if you will, know that this capital improvement project exists? Are we doing enough to to alert the potential bidding public? So the contractors and the people that are going to do the building? And I'm just wondering why we only got two. Again, I'm happy that you guys combined it. We likely need the project to go through because we have an atmospheric river coming through right now. I would just like to see a little bit more bidding, a little bit more competition, and a little bit more like confidence that this is the one to go for. Don't want to get the lowest bidder, but the best quality for the best deal price, because this isn't our money that we're spending. Some of it is in matching funds.
So so if I could comment back on the the question about alerting and for bids. So like most cities, we have a online bidding platform that companies will register for. And then they get alerts when anything is posted. That's pretty standard operating procedure. A few years ago, our city staff implemented that. So that's been around and is being used for these projects. One of the things that we had on the workforce agreement presentation where you asked about, you know, projects that were on it, there is one on there. We had initially planned on bringing two items today. The West Gateway Project, which is funded with community development block grant funding, which is federal funding. And then this project here. This project is a combination of impact fees and bond fees. So at the state level, they issue those bonds that are paid back by the taxpayers. So it's not a sales tax or general fund dollar for the city, but indirectly, we all pay against the. So it's not a sales tax or general fund dollar for the city, but indirectly, we all pay against the bonds of the state. What we did is we held back that other West Gateway Project simply because there was an announcement at the federal level of the with, you know, the freezing of grants and funding. They since rescinded that. There's been talk that it may come back, but by the time they rescinded it, we had already pretty much gone forward with the with the packet that's before you today. We held it because we didn't want to be in a position where we awarded a contract of, you know, three, three and a half million dollars, where three million of it was grant funds. We award a contract, the money goes away, and then we're on the hook contractually for it. So we held that back. If it's the will of the council, we could pause for a meeting and bring that back with further question or with further research. My only concern is that, you know, with grants, there are timeframes associated with them. And so we would need to get the the grant moving, but if we wanted to table that and bring this project back with the other project, that is something that could be an option as well, so.
So I guess I'd just like to know how much are we putting in as far as the city's taxpayer funds? Like, what are we on the hook for? Was the is four?
So the four million that we the dollars that we put in are through impact fees. So that is fees paid by developers for their impact on the 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 growth in the city. Then the the other grant, the Prop one, that is state issued bonds that the taxpayers of the state overall pay back, and then we applied for and received one of those grants. So what happens is, is, you know, they're they're pushing these requirements on us as a condition of the permit. And then they put some funding out, but then you have to to then match it. So it becomes a, you know, an unofficial state mandate. So they're they're giving you X amount of dollars. You have to bring a matching fund to it in order to comply with your permit. So that's how that works.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, so, yeah, I I am. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Pacheco, because I was happy to see us moving forward on a project that is focused on our infrastructure. And I think that the the fiscal plan or the financial resource plan or model for this project is a bit complicated, but everything with a big project like this is. And generally, matching funds are are going to be a part of it. That's just generally what will happen. And unfortunately, costs are very high right now. However, this is so important, as we all know. So thanks for your brief impromptu presentation and for the information. If we don't have any other questions or comments, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments for the side.
Okay, let's go ahead and move forward with motion or what what is the pleasure of the council?
Mayor Stevens.
Yes, member.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm a little confused because are we doing questions and then comments or questions and comments? Questions, I'm just confused about the order, so.
I'm doing them all together. Am I should we be doing them separately?
It it's up to you typically.
Okay.
Okay.
One quick comment then. Although it was money from developers, we could have used that million dollars on other infrastructure projects throughout the city. So it's a million dollars that we don't have, and it's because, in my opinion, of the agreement that we're currently legally bonded to. Having said that, I agree that it is an infrastructure project. It's much needed, and I am ready to make a motion to pass this if the my colleagues will entertain one. So I'll move that we adopt seven point one two.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So let's go ahead and move on. So thank you again. So next item, eight point one, a presentation regarding the Community Workforce Agreement between City of Hollister and Santa Clara County and San Benito County's Building and Construction Trades Council. May we have a staff report?
All right, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be giving the presentation. Dave Marioni, city manager. Just a second there. Okay, so wanted to give an update. We did receive a request to bring this item back and to give an update on the project labor agreement, which in in Hollister, we use a community workforce agreement. And so that's a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement with one or more labor unions. Establishes terms and conditions of employment for a specific construction project. So it's a single agreement covering all labor organizations, representing the building and construction employees involved in the project, covers all contractors and subs working on the project. And you often hear C W A or Community Workforce Agreement, project labor agreements used interchangeably. We have in Hollister a Community Workforce Agreement. And so they're very similar, but a Community Workforce Agreement includes community oriented commitments related to equitable workforce development, social justice, small business support, and or other issues. So on August twenty-third, the city council gave direction via consensus to have the staff begin to draft an ordinance requiring the use of, I'll say, C W As for public construction contracts valued at a quarter million dollars or more. That returned back to the council for final adoption in December fourth of twenty-three. And so that was adopted. Thirty days later, it becomes active. So what that did was is it amended section three point oh six of our purchasing ordinance. And if there was also a handful of other changes at that time in that ordinance, it wasn't just that. It did require that those agreements be used, as I said, for projects over two hundred or two hundred fifty thousand or more. It did formalize the KUPCA, which is a California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which had been adopted earlier in that year. And so we codified that within the within the ordinance. It updated the purchasing limits within the city man for the city manager and department heads. And then there was some just some cleanup language throughout the ordinance. So on December fourth of twenty twenty-three, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a community workforce agreement. And that was with the Santa Clara and San Benito County Building Trades Council. So that organization is what represents our county. And so is a a a group of many different construction and building labor organizations, all under that umbrella. So that was a three-year agreement beginning January sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. We waited for that thirty days from the ordinance side before that was executed. There is a three-year rollover provision if the parties do not meet to discuss changes prior to the expiration of the first three-year term. So the key provisions of this agreement, there's a provisions regarding work stoppages, strikes, sympathy strikes, and lockouts. So everybody covered by the agreement agree that there'll be no strikes, sympathy strikes, work stoppages, picketing, handbill, or otherwise because of project related disputes. And so this ensures that the work continues uninterrupted. And it also talks about arbitration procedures to resolve disputes. There is a pre-job conference component to where the project manager convenes and conducts a conference with the unions and the contractor representatives to ensure all of the terms of the agreement are met. So once the contract is awarded, had so like for the contract that was just awarded, that'll be the next step, is we will work with the building trades to schedule the pre-job conference. Union security and referral, the provision requires all contractors to recognize the unions as the sole bargaining reps of the craft employees covered by the the workforce agreement. And I did include the agreement as an attachment. You can see all the different parties to it. There's quite a few unions that are party to the agreement. And it requires the contractors performing the work on the project to utilize union registration facilities and referral systems to fill craft job requirements. For wages and benefits, the provision requires contractors to pay contributions to vacation, pension, and or other deferred compensation plan, apprenticeship, worker protection and assistance, and health benefit funds established by the applicable master agreements for each hour worked on a project. For the apprentices and helmets to hard hats, this is requires the contractors to employ apprentices apprentices, excuse me, from state-approved joint apprenticeship training programs and utilize the service of the Center for Military Recruitment Assessment and Veteran Employment and Hard Hats Program. It's also, we had talked about at the presentation, the TOPS Program and and where that's a pre-apprenticeship program where they do a multi-core craft curriculum training where folks from different job training programs. We had the gentleman that spoke in public comment about employees that were in training programs. Those same organizations have these type of training programs. There's one in Santa Clara County. There's one that serves San Benito, Monterey, and Santa Cruz County, which does pre-apprenticeship training. And the graduates of that program would be eligible to be picked up on these projects. Grievance arbitration procedures, it outlines the process to resolve disputes between the contractor and unions related to the interpretation of the agreement. And in the previous item, we we got asked about the project. So since the project, since the agreement has been signed, and Jennifer, if we can move the little box down in the bottom right-hand corner so the audience can see the dollar amounts there. The project that's underway right now, the City Roadway Improvement Project, you've seen construction all over town. That was the first project under that agreement. That engineer's estimate came in at eight point two eight million dollars. The bid amount was eight point two seven, so that one was pretty much right in alignment with the engineer's estimate. The section one grind and overlay, that was the project that was approved at the last meeting of December. And as you may remember, the the council prior before the new council was sworn in approved that because we were using COVID funds from the state that we had partnered with COG on that had to be under contract before December thirty-first because it was rescue plan. And so that, the engineer's estimate was just over seven hundred thousand. That bid came in at four hundred and forty-five thousand. We did receive eight bids on that one. On the West Gateway Project, that's the one I spoke about where we're awaiting the federal decision. Again, I didn't want to go under contract for three point four million when three million dollars would be grant funds. That engineer's estimate came in at four point five million, where the bid amount came in at about three point four five million. And then the project that we just discussed, the previous agenda item, where that project was estimated at seven point five million and was just awarded at eight point four. So with that, the recommendation is to receive the presentation which you have and to provide possible direction to staff. And we're available for questions. I also have Mr. David Beany with the Building Trades Council that is our point person in attendance as well this evening, so.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Yes, so I really feel strongly that, you know, we need to be stewards of public funds. And my my question is, is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold to enter into a C W A or a P L A, is that figure kind of a standard number or is it low? What are the typical numbers from municipalities such as ours to enter into these kinds of agreements?
So the original presentation that we brought forward was at about a million dollars. The council had requested it two hundred and fifty thousand. You see anywhere from a million dollars to other municipalities at ten million and and everywhere in between. Some municipalities have it much higher than that. It just depends on the size of the municipality. Municipality of our size, on average, these eight million dollar projects are pretty large unless we were doing it, you know, a major project, so.
Okay, my my last question is, so, you know, we got two bids for the industrial wastewater treatment plant project. And as I mentioned before, clearly, we need to do some infrastructure improvements, right? Town's getting older. Are, you know, I'd like to see more bidding. I'd like to see a little bit more competition because of the benefits that I mentioned earlier that, you know, consumers get. Get more choice, you get higher quality in certain cases, and I know that the C W As are going to provide that, union labor. I just prefer seeing a little bit more bids. And my own, my second question is, does the C W A in any way like hamper, maybe smaller contracts contractors that could be a bid on projects from getting into the bidding process? Does it does it does it weed out bids just, you know, as as it relates to the C W A?
So for non-union folks that would be bidding on the project, they they can still bid, but they would have to adhere to the terms of the of the project labor agreement, which includes the contributions to the different trust funds and those types of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I have a couple.
Yes, please.
How long does this agreement in effect?
So three years as of last January, so we're about thirteen months into the agreement.
So what happens at towards the end of that? Then do we reevaluate? Do we put it out again? Do we consider what what are what are the steps for considering other options or deciding to stay with this agreement?
Yeah, so basically, council has three options. And I did a separate risk analysis that's attorney-client privilege. I'm not going to go into that risk analysis out here. But your options are wait until the expiration of the C W A. It's effective for three years, and you can amend or rescind at that point. You can amend the C W A and the ordinance that sets that threshold, or you could rescind the C W A and revise the ordinance.
Okay, and thank you for that. And my next question, other than what is what was part of the presentation? What are the benefits of entering into an agreement of this type, which seemingly is more expensive? And I say that because I'm I'm thinking there may be some hidden costs or benefits that we are not fully aware of, and I would just like to understand that better.
Sure. So some of the benefits as, you know, bring back on the the slide, especially on the the type of folks that can get hired through the job training programs, the veteran services programs that they have, those definitely bring a benefit. You will often hear that if a job is paid, you know, if we did not have this, you would still be required to have the contractors pay a prevailing wage. And what what the position that you will sometimes hear is that a company that is prevailing paying prevailing wage to an employee that has not gone through the rigorous job training that usually the the union side. So the union side of the house has, you know, all of the different crafts usually have a a robust training program that gets you from apprentice to journeyman. And so if you've gone through that, let's say I'm employee A and I'm with the union and I'm fifty dollars an hour, I'm going to make up a number. I have gone through a significant amount of training to be in a position where I'm earning that fifty dollars an hour. Whereas if you go with another company that has not gone through that, you may have an employee that's making twenty dollars an hour and has not done any of that training. But for the particular job with the city, because it's prevailing wage, that person who has not been trained to that level is now going to get that fifty dollars an hour. You'll also hear stories that maybe that employee never got the fifty dollars an hour, and that went directly to the contractor. The other side is that when, like some of these projects, and when we go for grant funding, once you're under one of these agreements, is that your Building Trades Council will be an ally in your request for funding. So that is something like when we did the earmarks with with Congresswoman Lofgren's office, were able to solicit letters of support there because they, you know, have their contacts in Sacramento, which have influence over grant-making decisions. So you may have a situation where, I'll just use numbers that, let's say you have a five million dollar project, and we're going to use five million dollars out of our road fund. If you didn't have a C W A, maybe it's four and a half million dollars. So you save five hundred thousand. But with that five million, maybe we go out and get a grant that they're helping to support to offset even more of those those costs of the savings, if that makes sense. So I'm sure I'm leaving out other benefits, but as, you know, kind of a high-level summary.
Okay, thank you. Any councilmember Morales, please?
City manager, can you please share, I think, when we didn't have a C W A, how many of the companies that bid had violations, wage theft, issues in terms of just issues in general and? And through the CWA and being able to kind of bring them up to standard and how we were able to kind of navigate through that?
Yeah, we haven't had any issues so far with the first project that's been under the CWA. We did have some challenges with some of the other projects where there was reports into, at the state level. Because if there's wage theft, that gets reported up at the state level, and then we're made, we're made aware of it. In my role, I didn't deal with a lot of that, but it's my understanding that that was prior, there was some concerns there as well, before my time in the chair.
Anything, okay, go ahead, please.
Also, I think there was at least concerns from previous council about the contractors knowing how to do the job and some of the issues that we faced in terms of having to comply and be able to kind of redo the work. So if they're not trained adequately, they're most likely not going to be able to perform the work to standard. And it costs the city or the the organization, which we had to take action, to be able to remedy that. So it just costs more at the very end when you don't think, you don't do it right the first time.
Okay, yeah, good. Thank you. Thanks for that additional comment. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, so this item was brought forth as.